This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
So many of them. Like so many big schools aren't even taking their. The only reason they're not going to do it is because I wanted to take those jobs as. Isn't this all taken care of? Yeah, they require, because they require us to talk to them.
All right, we have a call meeting to order. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Troy.
Second.
Second by Rick way down on the other end. All those in favor? That passes five to zero. Kenny and Darren are both out this evening. This time I ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, this time I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Not everybody at one time. First by Rick.
Second.
Second by Jill. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. I'm still going to look your way for votes just because this is habit. All right, moving right along to item C, recognition. Dr. Bullemore.
If it pleases the board, we would like to recognize Rachel Coe, who's our food service supervisor and the supervisor over at the high school. Technically, she's an Aramark employee, but she's part of the Tiger family. And she was nominated and recognized by Aramark Corporation nationwide as a food service hero. She was nominated by Stephanie Nowinski, who's our Aramark Director for the Districts. And this is the comments that were shared by Stephanie through the CEO. First, Rachel is extremely dedicated and hardworking. She's extremely organized and focused on continuously learning and developing best practices to manage routine activities both efficiently and effectively. She brings a positive, high energy and personal touch to the team. When we started at FSD, she was the first one to help show everyone around the developed processes and procedures they learned over the years in their areas. It was more work for her, but she cares about the team as a whole and their success, and that thoroughly impresses everyone. That helped everyone tremendously and helped the team to high functioning much quicker rather than scrambling to orient themselves. She's behind every new objective and always supporting and driving the goal of feeding the students. She's a consummate picture of a leader. So we just want to recognize Rachel in that award that she got, that she was awarded by Aramark, and wanted to share that with the board and all of our families.
Congratulations, sir. All right, who's our MSBA delegate? Alterna, that is you. You're up.
Me, we're on video.
The Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. Despite some proposed legislation that could have been detrimental to school boards and public schools, there were some significant positives to come out of the session. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Branch Shields, tells us several bills aimed at public schools did not cross the finish line this year.
Yeah, some of the takeaways, you know, overall, public education had a fairly good legislative session. There was not a lot of bills that were necessarily damaging to public education that made it across the finish line. However, there were a lot of attempts, a lot of examples of trying to expand school voucher programs, expand charter schools, and those sort of things. They got a lot of attention, but they didn't quite make it across the finish line. So we ended up in a pretty good position at the end of this year. You know, something that really did work out great for public education this session was the budget. And a lot of kudos go to the Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Lincoln Huff from Springfield. You know, we fully funded the foundation from it again. Transportation is fully funded again. The minimum teacher pay at $38,000 is going to be fully funded by the state this year. It's no longer going to be the 70-30 match. And then, of course, the $50 million in school safety grants that were governor person priority. You know, all those things made into the budget. It was a really great year for appropriations for public education.
Shields says that although the session is over, it's still important for school board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and that many of the issues that were discussed in this session will return during the next legislative session.
I don't think that these issues are going away. I think that these are part of the overall conversations happening around public education these days and about whether or not public education should remain a public good or a private good. And I think that is a larger philosophical discussion that's happening across legislators across the country, but especially happening here in Missouri. You know, legislators are back home, they're away from Jefferson City. This is the time where they begin really re-engaging with their communities. And this is where you, as community leaders, need to step up, invite them to your schools, especially when you come back to school in the fall. But talk to legislators, talk to them about session, talk about the things that happened during the session and why and how those would impact public education for your district and in their community.
Shields says the advocacy work of school board members paid significant dividends during this year's legislative session and that your advocacy efforts did not go unnoticed in the Capitol this year. MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the Delegate Assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the Advocacy Committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The Advocacy Committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the Delegate Assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. So make your plans now to attend the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. Past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2023 Palm Wars Community Service Award. This award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through July 1st, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. Onto another important topic, annual Medicaid eligibility reviews that were paused during the COVID-19 pandemic have been renewed as of April 1st of this year. Over 4 million Medicaid participants will be impacted by this renewal, and many have never been through the process. Since schools have direct contact with families, they can play a critical role in making sure their families are aware of the actions required to maintain continued Medicaid eligibility. Declining eligibility could also negatively impact school-based Medicaid revenues as reimbursements for both direct services, cost settlement, and ESTAC are directly tied to eligibility rates within each district. Check the Missouri Department of Social Services website for more information and helpful materials that can assist in communicating this important information. And finally, congratulations to Shontal Abayfun of Republic High School. Shontal is the statewide Belcher Scholarship winner selected by the Future Builders Board of Directors. The Belcher scholarships are funded through the MSBA Future Builders Foundation, and the foundation has awarded hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships to over 600 students throughout the years. Congratulations to all of this year's regional winners. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, thank you, Caitlin Nowinski. All right, moving on to discussion items. First up is approval of fiscal year '23 end of year budget. Dr. Tomlinson.
Yes, one of the reasons that we have this board meeting at the end of the month instead of the beginning of the month that we normally have is so that we can close out our fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. What we're asking from the board is to get approval for us to be able to adopt these two considerations as presented so that we can close out our actuals on our budget and then start fresh on July 1st with our new budget year.
Second. First by Caitlin, second by Troy. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Next up is the middle school update and approval of the '23-24 handbook. Dr. Coffin.
Hi, everyone. Just want to give you, I've got a couple of things to tell you about the board. I don't know if you forgot my board presentation, but I only had two slides, so it would be real short. The student handbook, the only things, we did most of our major changes last year going into the year. So this year, all of the, yeah, so this year, all of the changes that we did, all the changes that we made are, they're very minimal. They're like just the price of the food, those types of changes. If you want to see them, if we don't have that, the presentation, you guys approved it last, last, they were in my board report last time. So when the page numbers and everything else of where we did that. So they were pretty minimal. The other thing that I wanted to tell the board about middle school this year, because we did so many changes last year, this year, we're just going to focus on our relationships with kids, the relevance of our curriculum, and making sure that it connects with, the kids see the connections to the outside world and upping the rigor. So that's, we're just, we're going with Dr. Miller's ideas of upping that rigor, upping that rigor. So that's pretty much it.
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Next up is the approval of the asbestos abatement. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to, motion to approve the handbook. Rick was the first, Troy's the second. Sorry about that.
Rick was the first.
Yes. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. All right, next up is the approval of the asbestos abatement from BNR Insulation.
Yes, so we went out to bid for asbestos abatement, and we actually had, Axiom was our vendor that we used to help us guide us through that process. We did receive a number of bids, and the recommended bid, which was the best and most complete bid, ended up being the one from BNR for $249,315. Reason for that is they actually included the proper pay for all the, for the work being done. So we wanted to make sure that was done properly and according to all the rules and regulations. So we would ask for your approval of that bid for the asbestos abatement.
First by Troy, second by Caitlin. That AT abatement there is pretty heavy.
I know.
That's the, we don't want to do it like you're crazy off the day.
I guess we will, remember, if we have to.
And this is already done and completed, so.
Well, glad you bring that up because next we would adjourn to take the vote on there.
No. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Okay.
Now, now I'd like to ask that we approve the invoice for asbestos abatement.
So moved.
So it's part of this, a little more than half.
It's gone first, Rick second.
Okay, first by Caitlin, second by Rick. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero.
My goodness.
All right, next up is approval of the transportation contract. And Mark Bullemore.
If it pleases the board, I'd like to present the amendment to the Transportation Services Agreement. So this is kind of what I've been sharing with you guys during my operation updates throughout second semester this spring, just about trying to meet the industry standard in pay for our drivers. As you all know, we're having to change routes on a daily basis during the school year, trying to make sure that we have enough drivers to fill those routes. Ken Green, our Transportation Director, has spent more time than she should on a bus, which means she can't be doing the director's job. So she's spending, you know, two, two people's worth of hours trying to do her job and a driver's job. So we worked really hard with the transportation in order to come up with this increase. This will provide a $3 an hour increase across the board for Transportation Services. And what that looks like for us is we were projected to have anywhere between a 4% and 6% increase over the next couple of years, and so that will bump that to a 12% this year and a 12% next year. We've already budgeted for that, we already have that handled, but it's going to ensure that we do a better job of having the buses filled with drivers and also having hopefully some substitute drivers, so we're not having to have our director jump on there and not being able to direct things. So these are things that we're budgeted for, we're prepared for. My recommendation to the board would be to approve the amendment to Transportation Services Agreement between the school district and first student. Also with this, they also donated a new to the Career Center bus for us to use because the old one was rather dilapidated. So they've got a new bus, newer to that bus. Yeah, newer to that bus. Request your approval for the amendment.
First by Caitlin, second by Troy. Questions?
I do have a question. In the MSBA report, it said the transportation was fully funded. How much of that is going to cover?
Well, when they say fully funded, that doesn't mean it covers our entire transportation company. It covers 60%?
I think 75.
75.
That's a relative percentage because also our students that live inside the mile attendance zone don't count, those are eligible riders, so those are additional costs that we take on.
And we take that.
Correct.
Correct. But at least we're competitive salvo, I think, right, for our fee wise.
Yeah, like I presented, I don't remember which month it was, there was a local school district who went to bid for transportation services, and first student did not get their contract. So we are already signed, if not all, most of those drivers to come join us. And now that we're increasing that pay, then we'll secure those. So we're really excited about the opportunity to reward those drivers that are stuck with us.
All right, first and second, any more questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? And that passes five to zero. All right, next up is approval of the '23-24 school meal price. Dr. Bullemore.
All right, so with the board's approval here, we would like to present the school meal pricing for '23-24. So this was a little bit more work here. What we tried to look at when we examined this was the paid lunch equity tool or the PLE formula from USDA that DESI requires us to use in order to set our meal prices. I'll talk about that in a second. Also looked at historical Excelsior Springs school district meal prices, and then compared those to some area schools. So I got meal prices for '23-24 from about 15 area schools, and then I narrowed that down to kind of the 92 corridor schools that we compare ourselves with, with Liberty in there as well, to just really look at prices and where we're at. Traditionally, when we looked at those historical prices, we really haven't raised meal prices that I could find since before 2015. Most of the school districts around us had a big bump in their meal prices in the '18, '19, or '20 school year. They've also went to bid more recently than we have, and so their meal prices are higher. That's something that we're anticipating in the future as we go to bid this year, that our meal prices will be higher. We know that, you know, food costs more for them, which means it's going to cost more for us. But essentially, what it comes down to with those current prices that you see there, last year, we were losing anywhere between a quarter and 55 cents per lunch, which Dr. Thompson did a great job in his years of running food service in that we were able to manage that with some of our free and reduced reimbursement that we got, but also it helped a lot. There was, there was universal free meals, that helped a lot. That's going away, we've been told it won't come back. And so we're going to have to kind of adjust now and then prepare for food prices to potentially go up again in the future. And so what the PLE tool is that USDA has that DESI makes us go through is it takes into account how many meals that you serve in a year, it takes into account your free and reduced price, and then it takes into account what the prices that we get charged from Aramark. And it goes through this whole formula, and our formula tells us that our meal prices should be about $3.15, which there, actually, there are some school districts that charge that or charge more than that, most of them do not. The PLE tool of DESI also tells us we only have to increase by a maximum of 10 cents. We only have to. What we're seeing now is we haven't increased in so long and the gap is so wide between our cost of the meal that we need to increase by more than that, which is why I wanted to get those area school districts numbers to compare to. So when I did that, what I found was most of them charged, so what we get charged per lunch next year would be about $276. Doesn't matter if it's an elementary meal, or it doesn't matter if it's a middle school meal, high school meal, we get charged the same. I still like that we, as a school district, we're one of the only ones that still charge three different prices to students. So there's an elementary price, a middle school price, because that lunch is a little bit bigger than elementary, but smaller than a high school, and then we charge a high school price. Most schools just do an elementary price and a secondary price because that's what they get charged. So my proposal here is that we will bump the student breakfasts, adult breakfasts, lunches by some different amounts here to try and equate to the area schools. We will still be at or below Carney, Platte County, Smithville, Liberty, Grain Valley. We'll still be at or below those prices for the majority of these meals, taking into account that we haven't raised for a while, but there are going to be some increases. So looking at student lunches for elementary, we're looking at about a 40 cent raise on those. Middle school lunches, about a 35 cent raise, high school lunches, 35 cent raise. You can go through those proposed prices. Those are going to keep us at or below those area schools, but it's going to help close the gap. Some of those meals, we're still going to be losing money on, but we think with our free and reduced reimbursement, some of the other things that we're doing to try and make some money in some of the grants that we got this year, we can, we can close that gap a lot better than we can with the 55 cent loss on some of those meals. Also, our families that are in the greatest need, that are in free and reduced, they'll still be eligible for those programs, and maybe with some of the meal pricing increases, that will encourage some of our families to fill out those, which could help us in the long run at our schools that are real close to being in that 50% range. So it's never a fun topic, raising the prices. Believe me, I have three kids that this will impact, and it's going to cost me some, but it's something that we think for the veteran of the district fiscally being sound and being prepared, knowing prices are going to go up again as we go to bid, it was something that we needed to do now, especially with knowing that the universal free meals aren't going to come back. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but my recommendation would be the board approve the '23-24 school year meal prices as presented. And then also, if you do approve those, you're approving that we can go ahead and adjust those in the handbooks, so we don't have to bring those back because of, because we asked for that.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Everything's going up.
Right.
Cost of food, if you go to the grocery store and that type of thing. And I understand like the three different meal prices.
Yeah.
Will we see maybe an increase in like serving size or anything with this?
So all, no, all of that, I wish. All of that is set by the USDA and the state. So they tell us how much we can serve, how much we can't serve. Like we, we've been audited more times for food service that I can count this year because they hadn't done it for like the 10 years Dr. Tomlinson did, and now we did them all, which was a great learning experience for me. But I mean, they're, they're, they are as specific as certain beans are legumes and certain beans aren't. And so that was something that we learned in summer school. And so they tell, they tell you exactly how much salt, how much fruit, how much sugar, and it goes not only day by day, but it goes within a week, and then it goes within a month. And so it's amazing, and Stephanie does, and all of Aramark that works for us, all of our managers, they do a really good job of trying to provide a diverse breakfast, snack, and lunch for us with the constraints that they're under. So we're really lucky that in the last food service bid that we were able to get a chef, because that helps a lot with that, because there are a lot of schools that don't. And you see the same when you get rinse and repeat it, especially with some of the supply chain issues that we've run into. But no, I, my kids ask the same thing. I wish, I wish we could get more serving size, but we're limited to what they tell us we can do.
As long as you keep chicken patty, I guess.
Absolutely.
All right, entertain a motion to approve. First by Troy, second by Caitlin. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Moving on to construction matters. Dr. Tomlinson.
Well, not only are we talking about revenues from Dr. Bullemore, now we're going to talk about some expenditures, we're going to start spending some money to build this new elementary school. So first up for you here is we're going to ask for approval on 2009 Exhibit A, and this is going to be on Bid Package 1 and the temporary classrooms that are being set up at the ECC for the Lewis students. That is for a little over $6 million. So we would first ask for your approval of Bid Package 1 and the temporary classrooms to be approved.
And that is not $6 million for the temporary classrooms.
No, they're included within that.
They're just included in the bid.
The bid package plus that. I'll go over the two. They're really fancy.
I think you need to take Mark's son by there and tell him that we're in cottages, because I did, we were arguing for 30 minutes straight, because they were training with us.
I don't care what you call it. All right, all those in favor? That passes five to zero.
Secondly, we have Bid Package Number 2. That is going to be for a little over $24 million, and that will be for the construction of the new elementary school through New Curden Novak.
Second by Troy. Any questions, comments? And just like that, we've spent 35 million. Well, two say New Jersey.
And it's common, people will say, wait a minute, I thought it's 24, that's this, where the rest to go. But you also have expenditures that go to the architects and the permitting, and there's other things that are getting included with that, but those are the two, those are the two real big ticket items, so.
All right, all those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Next up is stat turnover and exit survey review. Dr. Tomlinson.
This is something that we've done each year where we want to take a look at everyone who's leaving the district, we send out a survey and ask them to say, you know, hey, what's, what's the reason why you left? We try to, this is how I've always done it, so I like it to be consistent year over year, but I really don't take a look at retirements, I don't calculate that in, and I don't calculate employees that were let go. I kind of look at people who willingly choose to leave, to try to figure out what are those reasons of why people are willingly leaving, and what can we do anything different to try to address those moving forward so we retain our good employees. So we do this survey each year, and we get the results to come in, and it talks about, you know, compensation, you know, family situation, moving, getting out of education, a lot of those issues. So we track all that information, try to find trends and see where we're at. Take a look at the data, this year, we were at 8% turnover according to these numbers. And I took a look, I went ahead and polled the last few years. So back in '17, we were at 11%, '16 was 12%, we were at 15% in 2015, and 20% in 2014. So we've maintained, you know, right at or just under 10% the last couple of years. So I think we've done a pretty good job on our, our turnover rates, but obviously, we ask for comments, we ask for input, and if we see some trends that come along, we try to address those any way we can. So I didn't need anything for a vote on this, it's just something that each year, we always try to let you know that we do take this into account and try to figure out what's going on holistically throughout the district.
From a statistical, like, just, there's no statistics work done. It's very kind of scattered and things you would expect. I think when you look at that kind of data, you're looking for something really that stands out.
It's really a good sign that it doesn't, because it means that everyone has different reasons for whatever it may be.
Still like looking at the Career Center. With 75% of your employees.
They're all retired.
Yeah. They get subtracted out from the data because they're retiring.
Exiled with Noah Bruce.
So, but it's something we like to share each year and let you know that it is something we look at and try to track. One of the things, we did receive a teacher recruitment and retention grant this year, and so one of the components for that grant is that we were going to survey our staff both the beginning of the year, towards the end of the year, and then again, the very anyone who's leaving. So we use that data to turn back into that grant money as well.
All right, any other questions or comments with that? All right, moving on to summer school.
I would go up there, but there's no microphone.
Can you speak up though?
Well, I saved money this year, so we just spent 35 million, I saved us not that much. So I did save us some money. We're done. So last year, we, on staffing costs, we spent about $230,000. This year, we had about 175. We hired less people, although we kept probably about roughly the same amount of classrooms. Supplies, we did not have to spend as much in supplies, and the biggest difference is Annette and I decided not to do incentives. Our attendance roughly was about the same. Last year, we had about 1,000 kids from the summer school. This year, it was about 800, and we felt it didn't impact our attendance. Last year, having huge prizes and having those incentives, so why spend the money, especially if we, if we don't need to? So at the last minute, we kind of decided not to do that, and that saved us a significant amount of money. We spent about $15,000 last year, and this year, we spent about $2,700. So huge difference in doing so, because you're not providing two and three prizes at $100 apiece per grade level, kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. So that was a last minute decision, and again, it didn't affect our attendance whatsoever. So our ADA return, we're still, it's still going to even out about the same. Last year was like 485,000, this year would be about 395. So it's still going to kind of be the same with the amount of kids that you kind of run, thanks to Mark and all those wonderful formulas that he gave me from last year. And last year, we also ran 11 buses, and this year... And last year, we also ran 11 buses, and this year, we only ran nine. So that also helped us with busing costs and with the shortage of bus drivers, we had to even more so combine routes. One day, we only had eight buses, too. So it was pretty condensed. So overall, we felt like it was a successful summer school. Some other changes, we kind of condensed human performance at the high school level. Dr. Everett and I met way back in February, and we decided that a half-credit was a lot. There was a lot of time and a lot of hours and a lot of accountability piece that you have to put in there, and that in a time constraint with dead week and trying to get everything done before July, so we did a quarter credit, and it worked out so much more smooth this year. So overall, we felt like summer school was a huge success, and felt like we saved the district money, and still, everybody was happy.
No one must have had a great time.
He did. So, any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, last item this evening is approval of the '23-24 salary step increase. Dr. Thompson.
Yeah, one of the things we like to do is wait till the end of the fiscal year to take a look at where we are financially, and we do recommend to the board that we give a salary step increase to all eligible employees in the district, that will be both certified and classified, and make sure we've already budgeted for that for next year. We wanted to make sure that that was explicitly stated, so that we could make sure when we run payroll next month, that everybody gets their step increase.
So moved.
Second. Jill. Caitlin, you want to check me? All right, any questions?
Who's the second? Joe. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Well, tonight is the last night that Dr. Gross is with us. Two more days, three more days. She moves on to Crestview?
Crest Ridge.
Crest Ridge. So thank you for, four years, five years?
Five.
Five years. Big shoes to fill. I'm just saying.
I know.